So, welcome to the May twenty-second Select Ward Meeting. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, just as an introduction, if you wanna introduce yourself, Mark?
Mark Lamb.
I'm Dottie Phil Giannetti.
I'm Craig Bodger.
We have our Town Administrator Connor Reed and Assistant Town Administrator Michael Blanchard. We're blinking all over the place. I'm not sure what's going on with the broadcast, but.
Good, it's gone.
So, just wanna let you know this meeting is being recorded and broadcast on local cable and available upon demand. And the microphones are very sensitive in the audience, so if you whisper, you might get picked up on the microphone, so we don't want any hot mic moments. And we're gonna just jump right into this with a timed event at six o'clock. And that is the poll petition from National Grid in Verizon of New England, Plan three zero five seven three nine one four at Mill Street and Peabody Drive. Craig, if you wanna read the.
The Select Board of Easton is licensing authorities pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter one sixty-six, Section twenty-two, will hold a public hearing. Colony A Carona Boardroom, one thirty-six Allen Street, Eastern Mass, on Monday, May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, six P M. To consider and act on the petition. Massachusetts Electric Company doing business at National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated to install one J O pole on Mill Street, beginning at a point approximately a hundred and twenty feet south of the center line of the intersection of Peabody Drive. Stalling new subpole to allow the removal of existing tree guy in accordance with the petition plan number three oh five seven three nine one four, dated April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, is shown on file with the Select Board's office.
Great, and you're with National Grid. If you wanna just introduce yourself?
Yeah, Jared A. Gerber, National Grid, a hundred East Ashton Street, Brockton. It's just a, just a pole that's gonna be used for the tree guy there to support the pole across the street from coming down other than wind wires.
Okay, great.
Long story short.
Do you have any questions, Mark?
I do not.
Craig?
I have no questions, no.
I don't, looks like all the paperwork is in order, so we appreciate you being here. It'll be a quick one for you. Craig, if you'd like to make a motion to accept the poll permit?
Poll permit number three oh five seven three nine one four, so would Roger.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent.
That was easy.
Thank you.
Make your time.
We're gonna, we are going to go through quickly some licenses and permits, and then we're gonna jump into the Citizens Academy. The first thing that we have is an application for a change of manager at the ninety-nine restaurant. And that is on ninety-nine Belmont Street, Easton. So, hang on one second. Come on up. So, we have an, an application from the A B C C for a change of officers, directors for an existing Section twelve on-premises restaurant, all alcoholic beverages license for the ninety-nine restaurant. This is a corporate level transaction, and due to the large number of ninety-nine restaurants in Massachusetts involved in the transaction, the request went directly to the A B C C. They've given preliminary approval of this transaction. It requires only that the local licensing authority review the record and be signed and sent to them. This transaction does not affect the operation of the local licensee. So, thank you for being here tonight. If you wanna introduce yourself for our minutes?
Sure.
My name is Jesse Morgan. I'm the general manager of the ninety-nine at Easton.
Excellent. So, this is just a change in management? Nothing's changing with the hours or the menu or?
Right, yeah, nothing like that.
So, just to say you're in charge now?
That's it.
Excellent, congratulations.
Thank you, yeah, true.
Yeah, there should be two separate votes, so one is a change of manager to Jesse, and then the second is that corporate level transaction. So, you, you can discuss them together, but it should be voted as two separate votes.
Okay, alright. Anything that you wanna tell us about this, or anything specifically that's not in our information?
No, just like I said, just I'm new to taking over that location. Anything else that's changing, I don't know, you just mentioned at the corporate level, I have that, I am not aware.
Okay, I just, I guess I'll say this because we say this to anybody involved with liquor license with change of managers is, this is a college town. We take serving alcohol very seriously. We hate to see people come back and have to be before the board because we have to penalize for non-compliance. So, just make sure all your servers are trained and hopefully tip certified and.
Yes, absolutely.
We wish you best in your management there.
Yeah, I've been at this location for three years, and I was also at Bridgewater with Bridgewater State for three years before that, so.
Alright.
Pretty used to the college town, which is, you know, can be more daunting than a typical city or town.
Right, excellent. Alright, Craig, if you, if there's no questions, if you wanna make the motions?
Move to, to accept the appointment of Jesse Morgan as the new manager at ninety-nine restaurant.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous? And.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
The second motion.
Move to approve the change of officers, directors for existing Section twelve at restaurant, all alcoholic beverages license, for ninety-nine restaurant of Boston L L C.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay. The next is a one-day liquor license for Fernandez Lumber and Home Center Event, two ninety-nine Depot Street, June third, ten A M. to five P M. Frank Altieri has applied for a one-day beer and wine liquor license for Fernandez Lumber and Home Center. The event to be held June, June third, as I just said, ten A M. to five P M. An Easton police detail is not required. Frank, come on up. You wanna tell us about the event?
Sure, Frank Altieri, ten Boston Lane, Northeastern, representing Chalk Town Brewery and Fernandez Lumber. So, every year, Fernandez Lumber has a event where they showcase some of their products, and they allow people to come and also showcase other products. So, it's another one of these community involvement and community businesses working together to support one another. So, we really like those kind of events. We think it's a great opportunity to show off products from both companies to the public and maybe attract people that we wouldn't have seen otherwise. And at this event, we're not selling the alcohol, but we are sampling the alcohol. By A B C C rules and regulations, we, it enables us to pour two ounces of beer at a time. So, we'd be giving samples ourselves. That's what the liquor license is for. But they'll also be showcasing their green eggs and other barbecue stuff that they have there. So, it's a family, a family type of event. It's geared towards everyone. And it's usually, this is the second year that we've done it with them, and it's usually a good turnout and a lot of fun. It's great, you know, I, I really like being able to work with other businesses in town. As you know, we do these kind of things quite a bit, and I think it's beneficial to everybody.
It really is. That business collaboration is so important because you have a following with, with your people, they have a following with theirs, and when you combine that, really great success. Excellent. Any questions, Craig or Mark?
No, just always, thank you for doing this, Frank. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Now, I went to this event last year. Food, beer's good. The food is incredible, too. It's not what you expect. They, they have some wild creations there.
They, they bring in people from other areas that are, that are experts at using the green egg, so it's really cool.
I was there, yeah. I was picking up some stuff at, at Fernandez, and I could smell everything. I said, what is going on over there? And I've been looking around like, well, you have to pay to get a ticket. I was like, sure, sure, yes, I'm worth that.
Excellent. Alright, Craig, if you wanna make a motion?
Move to approve the one-day liquor license at Fernandez Lumber for June third, June third, two thousand twenty-three, ten A M. to five P M. Two ninety-nine Depot Street.
Second, Lamb.
That's Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Thanks so much, Frank.
Thank you, Frank.
And we don't have anyone from Easton Rod and Gun here? Oh, come on up. We have two licenses for Easton Rod and Gun, or license requests. The first one is for the annual chicken barbecue fundraiser, one twelve Howard Street, June eighteenth, from twelve P M. to six P M. The second one is the annual clam bake fundraiser, one twelve Howard Street, August twenty-sixth, twelve to eight. We can vote these separately, but an Easton police detail is not required for either event. So, thanks for being here tonight, and if you wanna tell us about all the events?
Andrew Solfree, twelve Sofia Way, Southeastern. These have been events that have been running since roughly the nineteen forties, if not before. It's a big fundraiser for the club. Each event's kinda how we keep our operating budget going and how we're able to improve on the property. You know, anything from the pond to the archery range and different places.
So, is this open to the public or is it private?
It's basically find a member by a ticket kind of thing.
Excellent.
Chicken barbecue, we put the hours twelve to six. It's usually it's a family event in the afternoon. With the clam boil, we put the hours later because we're debating on either a lunchtime event or an evening event. So, we, if it starts at twelve, won't go all the way to eight, but we wanna have the flexibility to start it possibly at four.
Perfect. Any questions from the board?
It looks great events. Good luck.
If you wanna make a motion on the first one, which is the June eighteenth chicken for twelve to six.
Annual chicken barbecue fundraiser, June eighteenth, from twelve to six P M.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous? And next, the clam bake?
The annual clam bake fundraiser, August twenty-sixth, from twelve to eight, at one twelve Howard Street.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Thank you. Good luck with your event.
Thank you very much. Good luck, Freddie.
Alright, excellent. Now the moment we've all been waiting for, the Citizens Academy class of twenty twenty-three. Michael, you wanna walk us through that?
Yeah, sure. So, really happy to welcome some of the members that are willing to make it tonight. So, just for the board's reminder and the public's benefit, Citizens Academy was started last year, and this was our second round. We have nine total participants. And it's an opportunity for residents to get an up-close view of local government, it's a nine-week course. We started here right in this room, and then they traveled around visiting police and fire, public works, schools. They were over to the library, were over at Frodenham, that was Health and Community Services. And then they attended annual town meeting as their final exam. So, we actually had a chance to meet before town meeting to kinda go over the who and what of where people sit and what the rules are. And then they were able to sit and observe, I think, a relatively quick and interesting town meeting. For many of them, it was their first, so it was good exposure. And I think it helped us get to corn rain at seven, which was.
Right.
So, that was certainly a benefit. You know, so the purpose of Citizens Academy was a way to educate residents, build some positive relationships, and increase communications between town government and the public, and I think we were able to do that. I don't know if anybody wants to make any comments, anything you enjoyed, or get out of the program?
I just think it was great, and I think every town and city should have one of these. It was great to see how much work goes into all of these departments, how much money it all costs and where the money goes, and how committed the people are. I, I just really, I thought it was great.
That's excellent.
It's really nice to hear. Thank you for that.
Sure, go ahead.
I thought it was great also, and I've lived in town for fifty years, but I learned things that I didn't know in visiting the D P W. I walk by there or drive by there every single day. I live on Sheridan Street. I had no idea what was inside that building, and it was great to realize how much is needed for that building.
Yeah.
Also, the police and fire. I've never been inside, so that was very interesting. Yeah, I loved it a lot.
That's great.
What was amazing is the follow-up on there is how much good work they get done in somewhat in public conditions. It was really impressive, very impressive.
That's great.
And I'll just say quickly, without this program, I would not have participated in town hall. To the angst of my fiancee, when I got home at night and talked her ear out for about an hour, I just thought it was fascinating. I was glad to be there. I wouldn't have been in the program, even though every week was great. I thought town hall and watching democracy actually was important for everybody of all of you, whether you're here for fifty years, you're here for two years, like I am. So, I just wanted to, that was probably the best part for the coming together. I think it's really important.
That's great. What was the biggest surprise that, that you experienced? Anyone?
Biggest surprise to me was the interior of those buildings, really. And even the first night, I've been to many town meetings over the years. So, and I wasn't able to go to this, this one, but just being in the interior of those buildings, that I had no idea what, and I'm excited.
Yeah.
Or how much limited space there is for the work that they do and what they do.
I think when the end results are that you have, you know, a reliable public service, you know, public first responders and police and fire and D P W, you don't really know what it takes to get that done. And then when you get into the buildings and they're all, you know, some of them, probably not the ones you went into, but some of the buildings that they work in are over a hundred years old. All of those are, are very old. They're not modernized to meet the standards that you have now in size or accessibility or gender for, you know, having different quarters, showers, things that you need like that. They've done a great job with what they have, and they keep it up nice, but it's, it's really very, very outdated, all of those buildings. So, I appreciate those comments and glad you picked up on that. Florence?
I also felt that the, the leadership in each one of those departments was, you could tell that their people and the leadership was there for the department. So, it was, it was nice to see that. They, they support their employees, and it, it just felt really good to see that.
Well, that's great. Well, it's not a bait and switch, but I would be really neglectful if I didn't mention that we have volunteer opportunities coming up that, that are appointed every year at the end of, at the end of the month for June. So, if you are really interested in participating in any of the boards and committees, take a look at the volunteer opportunity page on the website. And even if you don't wanna commit to being on a particular committee, but something interests you, go to the meetings. That's how I started off. I started going to meetings, asking questions, getting interested. And all the boards and committees encourage and take public comment, public feedback. A lot of them are really collaborative, like the Human Rights Committee. You can be there and be a participant. You can't vote, but you can certainly share great ideas and be a part of the process. And that's great for people that can't commit to, you know, a solid schedule but wanna be involved. So, I would definitely encourage you to think about doing that if you wanted to. We've got some really, really great boards and committees that do incredible work as well with all volunteers.
And also not deliberately planned. We have an update planned tonight on replacing those buildings if your schedule is already free and you're sticking around, but no, no pressure either way. But thank you all so much.
Alright, is there something else you wanna?
Last thing I just wanna say is thank you to the department heads. So, you know, I was very fortunate last year to kick this off and be intimately involved each week. This year, the department heads just really took it and ran with it. So, because of some presentations and our meeting schedules, I wasn't able to be at all of the sessions, but the department heads just took it and ran with it. So, I just really appreciate the time and effort they put in, and as a shared here, they really do have a passion for it, and really, they have a lot of fun.
Yeah.
And I think that would translate here, so I just want to thank them for their participation.
And their work is so interesting. So, I never thought I would care that much about pavement management and, you know, wastewater treatment facilities, but you, you get caught up in the enthusiasm of it.
One thing I do have to say, this department of public works, I think is one of the best. I've been here a long time, between my living years, I think they've lasted, let's say, ten years. It has been truly tremendous.
That's great, great to hear. Excellent.
I'm sure that Dave Field would be delighted to hear, to hear that feedback.
Well, you can tell like that, so.
We have some certificates, so when I call your name, if you're here, come up and I'd just love to present this to you.
And then we're gonna.
Joanne Santangelo?
Uh, no, you, sorry, we have this.
Mary Clay? So, these are six certificate of graduation as presented to Mary Clay, successfully completing the Easton Citizens Academy on this twenty-second day of May, signed by Connor Reed, our Town Administrator and administrator.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Christopher, do you have a name? Here you go, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Valerie Reed?
Harrison.
Florence? It's so good to see you again. There you go, congratulations. Florence, you're gonna be on one of these committees pretty soon. You go to enough the meetings, so I'm surprised you're not. Karen Picala?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Karen. Andrew Miller?
Interesting.
Thank you very much, Andrew. Kiriya Moda? Thank you very much. Nice to meet you too.
Thank you.
And Jennifer Gilbert?
Jennifer's not here.
She was here.
Oh, was she?
Yeah, she was in the hallway.
Oh, her daughter was here. She's shy, I mean, I'm not sure. I'm sorry. Her daughter plays me for a second. Maybe we, we catch her, so we're gonna.
She comes back in, flagger and we'll.
Yes, perfect.
We might catch them on the way out. We're gonna take a brief recess, right?
Yes, yes, so, Doug, do you mind calling a brief recess? We'll go outside. We have our banner, we'll take a quick picture.
Okay. We're gonna have a quick recess, and we are gonna be back in about ten minutes while we just go outside and take a couple of pictures.
Okay.
Thanks, Epat.
Oh, shit. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. For residents to enjoy uh food truck and ice cream truck offerings that we've booked. And uh this year, we decided to use the funds that we normally use for a catered meal to prepay these trucks to feed the first hundred and fifty people for free, so I think it's-
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, fantastic.
It's a great opportunity because in the past, we've done, you know, at the end of the ceremony, we'll say, please join us at the VFW for a meal. The VFW is a good five, seven miles away, we lose people along the way, especially with kids.
Yeah.
You know, I show up with my kids and I get a plate of food and I'm like, okay, we need to leave, so this will hopefully be a good opportunity to get folks to stay and enjoy the time as a community. So, looking forward to that improvement, hopefully bring in some more people out. And uh most importantly though, honoring Memorial Day, um, you know, it's a day we honor our fallen. And uh this year, we have a very special guest speaker, I have a very young Gold Star wife, a widow of a veteran, well, he was active duty military, Sergeant McDouglass Deegan, he was a member of the seventy-fifth Ranger Regiment and sadly took his own life. Um, so something that is all far too common, um, just trying to shed some light on that. And uh hopefully just provide some perspective for folks that, you know, were there to enjoy community and and fun and family, but take a moment to honor what the day is. And then, you know, remember that they would want us to enjoy it as well, so just taking that time and um and making sure we pay respects is what the day is all about, so we're hoping to do that.
Yeah.
And I would appreciate if we could close the road to uh take care of business and and have a nice day.
Okay. Mark, comments, questions?
Uh, it is a fantastic event, we do a phenomenal job, um, thank you, you, you know, the meeting at the event uh is is always takes precedence over everything else. I did not know that about uh the speakers when we saw this, there's a lot of gravity there.
Craig?
Yeah, it's always a terrific event and Cory always do such a great job. We appreciate that. I like the idea of the food truck too, it's like, you're right, people just call home, they don't they don't go to the VFW itself.
I love that idea too, because there's a lot of people that come out that you see people that you haven't seen in a while and you're trying to chat with people, but they're also trying to, you know, just take off and it's like, oh, I missed that one or that one, so it'll be a good opportunity for people to hang around and talk. And also, uh, for for the speaker, I mean, I really give her a lot of credit to be able to come and talk about something like that, and it is a really important topic, it's very hard to talk about, it's very sad, but it's important that people know about it, so, um, you know, congratulations to you for uh bringing her on board to to talk about that and express our, we will also, but let her know that we have a lot of appreciation for her.
Absolutely, her name is Courtney Deegan, uh, by the way, she's very involved in Gold Star Wives and Families uh in Massachusetts, so she would be a great, a great addition to the program. And just to make note, so there is a, the only change to this year's ceremony is that the start time is ten AM, not one PM, how it usually had been in the past, so sorry. That's to accommodate the just uh easier uh, you know, portion of the day for a lot of the participants. It was kind of decided as a group that that would make more sense to have a lunchtime meal rather than later afternoon.
Also, if it's a hot day, as some Memorial Days can be, to do it at ten versus-
Yes. Yes.
Later in the day is a lot easier.
Sorry, could you just walk me through like the order of events for the day, so you have nine thirty?
Nine thirty is uh meet at Washington Plaza, right, the portion of the parking lot right across from Hilliards, the open area.
Okay. Okay. Yep.
Um, that's just, I tell people to get there by nine thirty, knowing that some folks will arrive at nine fifty, uh, so, uh, 'cause I, I uh, I won't be shy about it, I coordinate the whole thing, I get a little bit of help, but it's very hard to run around everywhere, so I tell people, park here, move here, so nine thirty, be at Washington Plaza.
Sure.
Ten AM, we step off uh with the parade that's led by fire and police. And probably make our way to the park by, I would say, before ten, before ten twenty AM, uh, and then there's a ceremony that'll be less than an hour, um, so that'll put us close to eleven thirty. And um at that point, people can mingle and go uh to the food trucks and enjoy um some free food, it'll be like hot dogs, french fries, uh, water, and then there's an ice cream truck that's like a traditional ice cream truck, so not, you know, packaged ice cream.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Sweet Sixteen Ice Cream is the company, they've been at Oliver Ames a lot lately.
Oh, yeah.
And the food truck is Tailgaters, so.
Excellent.
And that will bring us to give folks a couple of hours to enjoy that and then we'll do cleanup, so DPW's been great helping with the planning of that, so.
And it's very generous of the veterans to uh offer that to everyone for for a free meal.
Definitely, so it's it's gonna cost the same that we usually spend on a catered meal, so I just think it'll have a better, a better use of the of the funds.
Okay. Excellent.
And then I'm sorry to ask so many questions, but-
Sure.
So this says for first, a hundred and fifty so on, will the businesses stay and accept cash for additional food at that point, or?
They will, um, but we also, we also have a little bit of funds left for the year.
Okay. Okay. Fair enough.
So, I went light on Veterans Day last year, so there's quite a bit left over.
Sure.
Um, so, just trying to be reasonable, set expectations, so we don't go heavy on Memorial Day than folks expect that for Veterans Day when, you know, so.
All right. Right. Understood, thank you.
So Monday is, Monday's gonna be partly sunny with a high of seventy, so it's gonna be a beautiful day.
And we'll be-
Looks like it.
Perfect deck.
Looks promising, so hoping for it, and um I know um Mr. Stevens is not here, I have the proclamation, we'll ask him to read, and I'd like to ask you, uh, Chairful Janetti, if you would say a few words, uh, thanking.
Sure. Of course.
Okay.
All right, so Craig, do you want to-
I'll move to approve the closure of Main Street to Sullivan Ave and Sullivan Ave to Oliver on the twenty-ninth of May.
Second land.
So that's Bajer and Lim, all in favor? Unanimous, excellent, thanks, thanks for everything, Cory.
Thanks Cory, look forward to it.
Excited you all with the flyer, appreciate it, just wanted to pass along and-
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have acceptance of a land donation. Twenty South Street, Old Forge Commons.
Sure, thank you, Dottie, attached in your packet is a memo uh from Jennifer Carlino, who's a land use and environmental planner, uh, works to support the Conservation Commission. Uh, twenty South Street is a development uh on South Street near the Five Corners area of Easton that was permitted by the Planning and Zoning Board. Uh, there are twenty units there and as part of a component of that special permit, there is a donation of approximately five acres of land um in that subdivision, uh, which will provide watershed protection, wildlife habitat, climate resilience by sequestering uh carbon in the soil and in the trees. So the Conservation Commission would take ownership of that following vote, a vote of approval by the Select Board and your signing of the deed, both of which are in the packet, I would recommend.
Excellent. I love the um, the the look forward to helping reduce greenhouse gas with with uh little projects like this.
Yes. Yes, no, this is good, and it's in the Five Corner Sewer District and uh it was one of the districts added in by town meeting to be privileged in for for that development, so it's it's a great project.
Excellent. Mark, Craig, any comments, questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Move to accept the donation of land at twenty South Street, Old Forge Commons.
Second land.
That's Bajer and Lim, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, next we have the acceptance of a resignation, Amanda Carlson for the Easton Shovlottown Cultural District Management Partnership Team, the term expiration was June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, Amanda had uh reached out and wanted to be a part of the committee, but didn't realize the night that it met is a night that she can't uh join, so uh we have a lot of events um coming up and we asked her instead if she would like to volunteer when able. And so she will hopefully uh be a part of some of the things that we do, but just not on the committee. So we have opened that up again and uh thank you for Amanda for throwing her hat in the ring and trying to give it a shot and um hope she'll contribute in other ways. So that's, um, again, it's her term expiration of June thirtieth, so I would take a for, a motion and a second, and then it's a roll call vote.
Slow move, Bajer.
Second land.
Bajer and Lim, um, roll call, starting with you, Craig.
Bajer Carlson.
Lynn Carlson.
And full Janetti Carlson. Next, we have a project update for the municipal facilities replacement, police, fire, DPW, schematic designs, update to anticipated timelines, the project funding approval via debt exclusion. Connor.
Thank you, Dottie, uh, so happy to give a brief update on our ongoing uh facilities replacement project here in town, focused on police, fire and DPW facilities. Uh, so while this has been a standing item on every agenda since some point last year, we haven't done a kind of deeper dive into uh the design and the schedule since March, and a lot has unfolded since then. So wanted to uh brief the board with where we are at of municipal building committee level. These slides are not mine, uh, they're from our owner's project manager, PMA, and our designers at KBA, so bear with me on any of the more technical items uh as I make do with their work. So since March, the design team has completed a significant amount of survey and wetland work on both sites, five twenty-four Depot Street for the consolidated facility, uh, police, fire and public works, as well as at Daley's Corner for the fire station to service the northern portion of town. Concurrent with this, uh, they've been working on the design program uh with the staff uh for those facilities, as well as doing systems level reviews with staff and uh board and committee permitting specialists for continued design refining. On our side of the table, uh, with the Select Board Administration, we've been at work with land related matters, including uh securing a letter of intent on the necessary five acre land lease from Stonehill College for uh that Daley's Corner North Fire Substation, which was executed last week. So while this progress has been steady throughout April and May, it became clear to the project team that our original roadmap, which had targeted voter approvals uh at town meeting and via debt exclusion as soon as August, uh, was just too aggressive uh to provide sufficient space for the design refinements necessary and more critically, we think, uh, for public engagement and awareness about the project. We wanted to make sure that we had enough time, particularly over the summer, to have a good outreach program with sufficient time for voters to learn about the project, ask questions of the project principals and make a choice they feel comfortable with uh come election time, given uh the amount of time effort and public funds that have been expended on the project to date. Uh, so we have shifted that election window to the fall, uh, which is uh not a dramatic change in the project schedule overall, since we've already been at it for a year and a half. Uh, and it's actually consistent with our experience with what we did with the Blanche Ames uh Elementary School. So making this shift gives us the summer, uh, and for the municipal building committee to do a few really important things, including having multiple meetings devoted to uh detailed budget review and value management exercises, which are important with any project, but given the scale and scope of this project, I think doubly so. As well as giving us sufficient time uh to build a better web presence and plan for community meetings like we did with the Blanche Ames School. So on this slide, you have a a sample of key milestone dates, which is informed by the Select Board's existing uh schedule that you've adopted for your own meetings through the end of this calendar year, and this summarizes the uh kind of major decision points and events um here through Thanksgiving. So uh fifteenth, we have voted to accept a letter of intent for the necessary lease with the college, tonight, we're doing a project update uh with the fall roadmap. The next big uh presentation of a Select Board on this project wa- is targeted for July tenth. That will uh be a presentation that we invite all board and committee chairs uh to come to once again, as we did last fall, we'll give a a general project update, we should have some nicer renderings at that point, uh, the designers always get very touchy when we say a specific rendering because they lose sleep- Uh, the designers always get very touchy when we say a specific rendering, because they lose sleep over the idea of someone pulling a presentation slide from three years in the past out when ground is broken. Uh, so a general project update, really critically will be a relaunch of a project web, uh, website and a, a more informed roadmap as far as community forums and where we will get updates on really important information that most people start to engage with and care most about, which is price. In August, uh, the municipal building committee will vote to approve the project scope and budget. That's a really critical milestone, because it informs tax impact analysis and all that other type of, uh, information that voters, uh, want and need to make their decisions. August twenty-first, which will be, I think, a year minus one day from our kind of really big project kickoff meeting last year, um, we will have a ref-, a final, uh, fall outreach and elections roadmap. The board will be asked to call a special town meeting for the project. Uh, we have Labor Day, and then when we come back on, uh, September eleventh, which is your first, uh, September meeting after the holiday, we will have a tax impact analysis presentation and discussion. And at that point, uh, the board would be asked to, uh, call the debt exclusion election associated with the project. And at some point in September, um, this date is a little more fungible. We will need to have a conditionally executed full ground lease with the college posted to various places with the state to comply with procurement law, and that would bring us to an October or November window for, uh, special town meeting and the associated debt exclusion. We didn't wanna put dates on this even for, um, illustrative purposes, because obviously those are major decisions the board will have to make. Some nuances here compared to when we did this in twenty nineteen with the Blanche Ames Project is that you now have vote by mail. So that may, uh, change the distance of time between, uh, the town meeting and the ballot. Uh, but we will work all of those logistics out over the summer and give the board options, so that you can have choices you feel comfortable with. In a little bit more detail, so those are the, the really big milestones. There is work happening frankly every day, but, um, with other boards and committees on a monthly basis throughout the summer as well. Uh, so there will be numerous meetings of the municipal building committee, including budget estimating and value management exercises, uh, starting in June seventh, when they're gonna get the project, um, schematic, uh, level budget estimates. They'll start value management in June, continue it in July, um, really significantly. So we, we planned that July ten meeting, uh, with the Select Board to give you an update on the project is the night before the July eleven value management exercise with municipal building committee. Um, so that i- if there are folks on any of our committees, anyone in the public who really wants to understand, you know, why is the town trying to replace this many buildings at once? Why does this cost what it does? That they can watch as these, um, their neighbors go through the costing exercise. And, uh, it'll be not unlike what we did with Blanche Ames, where we will basically have a live editing spreadsheet going through line by line, certain items that we can and cannot remove from a programmatic perspective for these buildings to be, uh, as cost-effective as possible without, uh, you know, cutting off pieces that we need and will need to pay for later. Uh, this will inform that August vote for the municipal building committee. And then there's a couple of other kind of project-related, uh, milestones for the Select Board at some point in June or July. We will have that ground lease proper, so we have a letter of intent. Council for, uh, both parties are working on the, the proper, uh, fifty-year lease now. The Select Board will have that before you at one of your meetings in June or July to execute. Under procurement law, any lease more than three years needs to be approved by town meeting, so that would be incorporated into the special town meeting for the project funding approval. And then at some point in the fall, the finance committee, as with any town meeting, uh, warrant item, would be reviewing, uh, the project financials uh, and, and taking their recommendation there. Another important aspect of this timeframe is that, um, we are going to enter a real crunch with, uh, public outreach and education. So starting last week and moving through June, leading into July, the, the project website, which is right now just kind of an offshoot of the town's existing website, which is adequate, but not modern by any standards and not easy to navigate. Uh, PMA, our owners' project manager, without, uh, through a no-cost change order, is bringing their communications team on board, and they're going to rebuild a dedicated project website with its own URL, uh, not dissimilar to what we did with Blanche Ames, to have it be more navigable, easier for people to find, uh, what they need to learn about the project, rolling out a constant contact mailing list, as well as a social media page for the project. So not, uh, again, dissimilar to other successful projects we've done, uh, between the schools and the, uh, larger sewer projects, where folks who wanna get project updates, rather than reading through the town crier, which can be, uh, quite long. It's a good thing, there's a lot of nice stuff going on, but, uh, can sign up for kind of focused updates on the project. Given that, uh, we don't have local papers, uh, as we used to, which is a shame, we also know that we're gonna need to be considering things like direct mailers for folks who don't necessarily engage with, um, their community through local social media pages. And so we'll start drafting those concepts this summer as well. We will plan to hold, in addition to formal board meetings and updates, uh, at least two community forums of a project team, uh, project principals and the public. Um, and again, a lot of this looks really familiar, because we, we are borrowing heavily from the MSBA process and from the Blanche Ames voter approval, uh, process that we successfully implemented in twenty nineteen. So this is from their communications team. Obviously, they're not here, but really the, the goal here is to make sure we have the right information on these websites, that it's communicated effectively with folks. Something that will be different for us, uh, we do not typically have project-specific social media pages, uh, but that is something that the OPM will have and will manage. They have been doing that with a lot of their projects around Massachusetts. Um, they feel it's really, uh, i- an important way, uh, to engage with folks, as we know. People do not, you know, come and sit in board meetings typically. Uh, that's not a failing of theirs. People are, are just busy. Uh, that's just not, uh, the way that folks engage. And so if we want to be effective, we need to make sure that we're making information available in spaces that people actually read it. And so, uh, that will be ruled out at some point this summer, um, so that, that information can be getting pushed out in a way that, uh, folks can hopefully see it. Here's just a couple of examples of, uh, PMA's work in other communities. You know, they do project websites, schedule, uh, updates. Um, the thing, uh, on the left is something we did. We sent a postcard to every, uh, household in Easton, uh, to inform them about the, uh, Blanche Ames, uh, building project. Actually, it was not named at that point. It's quaint. Uh, actually says all three schools on the top. That's interesting in hindsight. But, um, we sent that postcard to everyone, uh, in Easton in the lead-up to our community forums, uh, which again, we're gonna kind of, uh, borrow from that successful project here to make sure that everyone has a chance to engage and learn. So before getting into a design update, any questions or comments, feedback on the roadmap?
I like that you, that, uh, you and the committee have pushed it out a little bit, because I think the public, the public outreach is really critical to this. And, you know, as some of the people from the Citizens Academy said tonight, they were really so surprised by the conditions of those buildings. And I hope that people really will engage, and, uh, you can't, you can't go in and take a look at the spaces. And i- it really puts a whole new understanding on why this is so important. So, um, the more time, the more opportunity we have to engage with people, get their feedback, and, uh, you know, their perspective on it, the better.
I would agree. The question now was a smart decision. Responsible fairness to the people of the town. I heard that, that was a fantastic one, isn't it?
Okay.
And I agree. Fits the timeline as well. Um, it's still a little, the things are coming up on us pretty quickly, but it helps.
Right.
But in all, in all honesty, people really, really don't pay too much attention until the very end also. So that's when you want all the focus. Um, we've been working on this for years, and it doesn't feel like, people still say, oh, this is coming up really fast.
Agreed.
It, the end comes up really fast, but the work to get there is, you know, the, a lot of due diligence and a lot of time with that.
Thank you.
Do we plan on having the municipal building group out front on this too, so that people can really understand how much work they're putting to?
Yes, so last fall, we, uh, did something a bit atypical with a project like this. So usually you don't have a big push, um, for kind of public events when you're pre-schematic design, because there's just really not a huge amount to show people, um, except the existing facilities condition. And we decided to do that last, um, September and October, if you'll recall. And we did have leadership of the NBC at a lot of those events, at NRT, working at those tables, coming to meetings with the lines of the staff. So yes, and but the members are, um, you know, I, I go to, I'm not actually a member of the municipal building committee. I go to a lot of their meetings currently for, uh, obvious reason. And, um, you know, they have a, a huge amount of expertise. There's architects, engineers, um, construction professionals, facilities managers. So they're really detailed and in the weeds there, and they have been at events when we did have those public, um, uh, engagements last fall, and I would fully expect that again.
Great.
So moving into a, a quick design update, here's the most current site plan draft for the combined site at five twenty-four Depot Street. To the top of the screen is Depot Street. The bottom left is, uh, the residents of Five Corners and Shaw's area. We'd have a combined police and fire, uh, facility facing Depot Street with an access road to DPW and water, uh, in the back of the site. We're still working out a potential trailhead for the community, because we think that'll be an important public amenity, along with community space inside of the building, uh, for public meetings as well. So what you're looking at here, you see the, the same site map. The numbered areas correspond with photographs of solid waste on site. This is a subject we're well aware of here. Um, and then the red asterisks are additional sites that are not photographed that also have solid waste. So for a few months, uh, site survey and wetland delineation were ongoing. That really constituted a substantial amount of time and recent month's efforts for this project. Again, this is, you don't necessarily do this level of delineation and survey this early in a project, but given the scale and scope of a project, we did not want to put ourselves in a position where we seek, uh, and work to earn voter support for a project of a scale, and then do the detailed design and find out that there are constraints on site that make it not viable. So we rearranged that to an extent, um, and did the detailed, uh, flagging of the entire site. Uh, and we'll be meeting with, uh, conservation, uh, for an ANRAD and that type of filing to confirm the, the boundaries of the wetlands. But so that, that work was, um, over many, many weeks. And, um, the photos above show, you know, uh, existing conditions there, but again, the, the board's aware of, community's aware of. And one of the things that'll be really important with this project is that it will allow the town to deliver on a, uh, goal that was identified years ago shortly after purchasing five twenty-four Depot Street, which is that we would be able to remediate and remove, uh, most of the waste shown in these photos, because they would be within the project limits, and that would be a much more cost-effective way of getting into the site and removing, uh, these, uh, uh, kind of solid waste, uh, dumps, so that, uh, we could clean the site out. And part, something that's important here is that a, a lot of these are in wetland resource areas, and so we would be able to, to clean up and take, uh, those materials out as part of a project. Um, as you can tell from the layout, flagging of wetlands did drive the design team to ship the building, um, to minimize the impact on wetland resources, and doing so, um, would make it so that we, we can't onsite, within the wetlands restrictions, have a kind of single, continuous, contiguous parking lot for all three plus of those departments. So that's why you end up with an access road. Aerial for Daley's Corner, uh, this has not really changed a whole lot. This site is, um, easier, uh, from a, a survey and wetland perspective. This is across the street from Hilliards on Main Street. Um, this has also had wetland and, uh, topographical survey work done and hasn't resulted in any major changes. Um, we have, as I led with, made other important progress associated with this parcel, which is executing the letter of intent with the college for the lease of this land. Um, and then finally, we don't have a slide for it tonight, but I just wanted to know that the design team's now getting into details on mechanicals and HVAC, uh, for the project. We're exploring options for energy efficiency across solar and geothermal systems to make sure that, uh, if we're, uh, fortunate enough to earn approval of this project, that these are really kind of future-ready buildings. Uh, we have, uh, modern, efficient, uh, lower carbon impact, uh, systems in place, uh, which will help pay for part of a project over time through reduced energy consumption as well.
And we're gonna be taking several buildings offline that are contributing highly to that.
Correct, that are, that are not ecologically friendly sites, to say the least.
That's great. What a great, uh, a great bonus benefit to this.
Yes, and then there's a, a significant improvement in the, uh, financial incentives behind things like geothermal now compared to even recent years. And so the design team's really excited about that, and we'll, we're gonna be learning a lot more about that over the summer, so. So, hope that was helpful information. I'm happy to take any questions. And then again, that's just kind of a caption showing where we are, um, and, and where we're heading in the next few months.
Very comprehensive.
Questions will be over the next few months, because people ask questions and listen. Eligible questions.
The schematic design is the exciting part, it's when it really starts to visually come together.
Yes, yes. And they're, they're actually, they've started doing, um, very, uh, for, for Greg Joint's benefit, very, very, very preliminary three-D renderings, uh, to get feedback from the municipal building committee and, um, and the team on, you know, again, really high level, but, you know, more traditional versus more modern. What kind of design aesthetic are we looking for at these sites? And so, um, that's going to start coming together. Uh, it's, that will feel very quick. Uh, that goes from you have none to all of a sudden you're working with a few different design models. And, uh, they've already done, uh, room layouts, which they're refining, but we're getting to the point of room layouts, uh, for the departments. So it's, it, it's moving.
Great. All right. Well, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the acceptance of the minutes of May fifteenth.
Slow move, Bodger.
Second land.
Bodger and Lim, all in favor? Unanimous. Um, executive session minutes of April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. This is for approval only.
Slow move, Bodger.
Second land.
Bodger and Lim, all in favor? Unanimous. Town administrator notes?
I have none, thank you.
Assistant town administrator notes?
I had just two. Uh, first, um, this is National Public Works Week. Um, so we just wanted to take a minute to thank Easton D W, work tirelessly every day, Easton ready at any hour to serve Easton residents. Um, you know, so much of what they do is behind the scenes. We see the snow plowing and some of the big road construction, but so much is behind the scenes. And, um, as Dave feels, it's, uh, Public Works makes it happen, so, so just wanted to thank that. And Dottie, you mentioned to the, um, Citizens Academy, but just for the general public and existing board and committee members, as a reminder, uh, we are, uh, uh, the annual appointment process is underway. Applications are due on Tuesday, May thirty-first. Um, and people can visit our website, um, to apply. And again, that's people who are already sitting, their terms are expiring, and new people who are interested in this one, you can apply as well.
Excellent. Thank you. And, uh, Select Board notes?
I do not have any.
No?
I don't have any, at this point.
Did you have something?
No. I was just, I reminded the executive session, that's all.
Okay. Uh, just, we're really, I'm really excited about Monday, um, for the parade and look forward to seeing people there. I think this is gonna be awesome with food trucks and ice cream trucks.
Yes.
You know that I have a fondness for that. Still trying to get them for town meeting someday. All right. Um, with that then, we are going to adjourn into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property located at, for land situated at three sixty Washington Street. And that is because the chair has declared the meeting might have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, not to return to open session.
Slow move, Bodger.
Second land.
That's Bodger and Lim, all in favor? And do, I do a motion to adjourn this?
Uh, two hundred and roll call.
Roll.
Two one.
Roll call to adjourn to executive session.
Two hundred and.
Bodger, yes.
Land, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. And do we need an official adjournment, or does that cover it?
No, you will adjourn out of executive session.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much, and thanks, ECA, for recording.